Town Council to order. Stephen, would you lead us in the invocation?
Absolutely. Please join me. Heavenly Father, I just want to say thank you for letting us be here tonight. And I just hope that you give us wisdom and the courage to do what's right with the town. Hope that you look out for everybody that came here tonight and make sure that they make it home safe. And these things, I pray in your son's holy name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to remind Council that when you are speaking tonight, please use your microphone better. We've gotten into the habit of sitting back in the chair and not speaking. It's hard to hear online. And I tried to listen when I was in Ireland and I couldn't hear a few of you. All right.
Mark this moment, mark this moment that you were not happy you could not hear me. So, I'm just saying.
I heard you. Graham was a little hard.
I think that's the first time anyone's ever said they couldn't hear me.
I know. You know, it's kind of odd because we can hear each other across the room, but this doesn't pick it up for recording, so.
I watched a couple of meetings and you can't hear the people there.
There either.
So, they need to speak up.
All right. Erin, can you help me remember to tell them?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, first up, public comments. We have one person signed up tonight, Sarah Harbin. Welcome. I gotta tell you all this. The length of your comment is three minutes. Comments shall be restricted to the subject. Oh, that's a public hearing, never mind. Three minutes, address the Council your name and address to start and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Sarah Harbin. I am not a resident of Stallings, but I used to be. I am currently a resident of Mill Grove Road. And so, I am here to speak regarding the Coulter development that y'all have been discussing off and on for the last year. Basically, Coulter is putting forth that they would like to build 1,000 homes, a very high-density housing development in an area where there is not high-density housing. So, we have a number of people here from that area. We are not members of Stallings, we are not citizens of Stallings, but we want to stand up and say, please do not annex, please do not develop in this way. We understand that development is inevitable, but we're asking for development that is in like mind with the area that is currently there. We're asking for development that fits the place that we move to. We do not want to live in Stallings. I'm so happy that y'all do, but we want to live in an area that is low-density, that is not sprawling. The county also, if you have followed this ordeal for the past year, was set to designate our area as rural land use. So, if the town now decides to annex that property and to develop it with high-density, that will be going against the current plan of the county, which may cause issues for things like roads, for things like this sewage field. You've also had off-agenda presentations about this development, and we're very worried about that. We're watching very closely. I'm not the only one. There are multiple other people in the room tonight. There are multiple other people in our area who are paying very close attention. What I would like to ask is ultimately, if y'all do choose to annex, if you do choose to make a high-density development, who's going to benefit? Is it the people of Stallings? Do the people of Stallings benefit from stretching the town even longer, for stretching your resources so that police are having to drive 15 minutes from the police station to this current development? Are 1,000 people, 1,000 homes, 2,000, 3,000 people, are they never going to call the police? Are they never going to call the fire department? Absolutely, they will. They're going to tax your resources. They're going to stretch what is already a stretched budget for your town. It is not a good deal for the people of Stallings. It is also not a good deal for the people of Mill Grove Road. We do not want high-density development. We are willing to accept development not of this caliber. And finally, we don't think it's good for the county. We feel like this is going to cause issues between the town of Stallings and the county. We have talked with county developers, and we have dealt with this issue already. So, we would ask very strongly that you consider not just your development wishes, but our development wishes and the people of Stallings and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak during public comments? You must have said it well.
Yeah.
You did. Thank you very much. That takes us to the consent agenda. I have one item. I'd like to pull off the consent agenda. The additional K-9 team chief, you're ready to, at a certain point, you're ready to present that. I think the public would like to see how that plays out, and I agree with the program. I just want to make it very transparent what we're doing there. The rest of the consent agenda, I'm good with. Everybody else good with it? Oh, let's make, let's make that item... Let's make that item 7A.
7A, all right.
Any other changes from Council?
Well, we're still not down to the agenda changes, right?
Sorry, on that, on the consent agenda, I meant.
Oh, okay.
I move approval of the consent agenda items A through D with the removal of item E as new 7BA.
Second on that?
Second.
All in favor? All right, good. Reports. Graham, anything cooking?
No, I guess I will take this opportunity, if you'll allow me, just the topic at hand. So, we've gotten a number of people who have voiced their opinions on the potential development over in my district. I do want to reiterate at this time, as far as I know, nothing's been submitted. There is nothing for us to review or even approve in terms of annexation and/or the development. So, I do want to just state that. But full disclosure, I did have a call with Emily Powell, who works for Coulter. She just wanted to understand what some of my thoughts were. I basically just outlined a lot of the concerns that I think we've all stated, but nothing more came of that, just, you know, laying her know, like, you know, as a town, I think we're all concerned about traffic. We are always concerned about expenses and then how this would impact like our police force in the sewer. So, but there was nothing other than that. And as again, nothing has actually come before the town. So, other than that, that's my only report.
Thank you. Taylor Ray?
No, sir.
Lori?
No.
Nope, done for me.
And I have nothing new to add, except I do concur with a lot of what Graham just said, that this issue isn't, this potential project is not conducive to the goals of Stallings Town Council. For years, we've been planning a different way of growth, and this is not exactly what any of us had in mind. So, I'll leave that to a later item on the agenda and move on to town manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Proteman. Good evening, everyone. Several things to report. First, we're going to have fire panel testing, fire alarm testing tomorrow with the fire marshal. And so, a number of our staff are going to be working remotely. There are some things, alarms are going to be constantly going off, that kind of thing. We should be in by noon. I've submitted to the budget line item transfer request form. That is the intra-departmental request. We submit that every month for transparency purposes. Per our policy, I'm notifying the board about a grant that I've given permission to the police department to apply for related to the public safety camera system. There have already been several instances where the public cameras we do have, there's a crime that's been committed, we're able to find the license plate of the alleged suspects. And so, it's been a useful tool. I appreciate the board's support and Chief Franks and you bringing that forward to us. So, I've sent you all the details of the grant, but they would pay basically for a lot of what's already on the town's capital improvement plan, the CIP anyway. So, it aligns. And because of our policy, I have the authority to authorize Chief to submit for it, but wanted to mention that. We, the mayor, helped cut the ribbon for a new business in South Stallings that Chief and I had the opportunity to go and visit at the same time, Lead MD. It's a primary care and med spa, interesting business concept. So, welcome to them and to the community. Let's see, occupancy tax information. You want to share that for us, Ms. Nichols?
Sure. Council, with your agenda email, you received attached the occupancy tax education information, both not only the schedule and the plan, but as well as the flyer. If you have any concerns or any questions, please let us know, but otherwise, we'll be moving forward with that information.
Can we share that?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, if the board is comfortable with that, I can... Let me know if you need actual hard flyers. You can email it, whatever you need to do.
And Ms. Cox, please correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, the town, when it comes to something like this, we can't take the political position. We can share information, correct?
The town is a body.
As a body.
Cannot.
Now, you all as individuals can, but as a town, as an organization, as a government, it's our role to be basically a sharer of facts.
The information that you had just explains what it is, how a referendum works, when it's going to be on the ballot. It is purely just informational purposes. You, as an individual council member, can, you know, share with your constituents and your opinion on it, but we, as a town, the information is just a factual piece.
Okay, all right. So, we can't say, you can't say, "Please vote for this," where we can.
We can.
Yeah, okay.
I wish there was a way to say taxpayers, residents of the town will not be paying this tax because that's what last time everybody was...
It does say that on the information, and we have changed that and put it at the very beginning. But I do want to make it clear, unfortunately, we do have to continue calling it an occupancy tax because it is a tax. Some people said, "Why can't we call it something different?" We have to call it a tax. But it is just for the public that is listening. It is just for visitors who come in from out of town, who pay a tax like you would at a hotel or motel at any city that you would go to, or at your VRBO, or, you know, any other rental like that. It's not the owner of the property that pays the tax. It is the visitor who comes to stay and pays the nightly rate.
Alex, one question for you.
Yes, sir.
The fire alarm, is that part of the upgrades that we were talking about earlier? Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Ms. Nichols, and thanks for all the great questions. A couple more things. Engineering has a Mr. Parker, and then Eunice has an update after Mr. Parker.
Just wanted to introduce our new stormwater compliance manager. This is June Rappi. We stole her from Carolina Wetland Services. She's got great experience. She's going to be spearheading our MS4 program, which is issued through the state. She's got great experience, and she's going to be able to step in right away and help us out, especially with stormwater inspections throughout the town. So, we're lucky to have her. Happy to have her.
Welcome aboard. Welcome. No, no, it's September. Boom, boom. Yeah. He's never heard that one. We're here all week. We don't have veal. We have Nutter Butter Cookies.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, June.
Good afternoon, Council. Ooh, the microphone is going to be fun with my voice. So, just want to give you a quick update. As you guys probably already know, 50-Fest starts this weekend. We're really excited. It is all free to the public. So, Friday, we're kicking it off with a concert from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Stallings Municipal Park. It is an Earth, Wind &amp; Fire cover band, so it'll be pretty cool. The next day, it is from 11:00 to 4:00 in Stallings Municipal Park. On that Saturday, we'll have games, crafts, activities, live performances. David Shoal is speaking for five minutes, as promised, right? Two minutes, two minutes, I think. And then, we'll have Jill Reed, a former member of the Historical Committee. She is going to talk about the town's history, make a nod at the 50th, and just really represent the town and everything that we have been through in the last few years and the growth that we're headed to, and just really excited to have her out there. We'll also be unveiling the historical marker. If y'all want to know what it says, you have to come out and look at it. It'll be up as soon as Friday in the park. And then, Sunday, the police department is hosting the car show at the elementary school from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, if you guys have any questions, please reach out to me. We're really excited, and bear with us. This park department running a three-day event is going to be pretty exciting. So, we're pretty pumped. Hope to see you guys there.
Looking forward to it. Hey, just one thing that, one thing that came up, like, I guess you have to register if you want to show your car. I think this is the first time that we're having to register. I think the last time it was just show up. So, I'm looking for the community to show up. So, I think you can register on the website, right?
Yes, sir. You can register online. The fee, Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong, goes to the Special Olympics this year. So, that is why there's a fee. It's part of their fundraiser. So, if you don't pay the fee, you'll be showing it off in the parking lot. So, just please register online.
The whole thing's a parking lot, right?
The other parking lot.
Oh, the other parking lot.
Yeah, yeah. So, everything's online, but like I said, if you need more information, please, 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 reach out to me. You guys have parking passes at your seats that were there. I will email you a copy as well. Those will get you into the main lot of the park. If you do not have those, I have written your names down, but our parking attendants get pretty crazy. So, make sure you have that parking permit with you guys. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Eunice.
No, sir. That concludes the staff reports. Thank you.
All righty. Moving down to agenda approval. We've already got one item coming off, as earlier mentioned, going to 7A. Any other changes?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have a?
Yeah, I would request removal of item number six, the third-party sewer analysis. Well, are we going to discuss?
Let's, let's let that play out, discuss it live, and then we'll just...
Item seven. I would request removal of that as the mayor Dunn is not currently here.
Let's do seven off of tonight and move it to the next council meeting.
So, I would...
Any other changes to the agenda, folks?
Yeah.
I'll let you do it.
Okay. I move that we approve the agenda as submitted with the addition of K-9 team that we're talking about from Wingate and removing number seven, 2725 Old Monroe Road.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
And I don't know if you said it, but move K-9 discussion to item 7A.
I thought Wyatt's not going to be at the next meeting either. So, it might be, we won't, might want to go two meetings.
Let's go with this one and see how it goes.
Okay. The thing that he wants to talk about, that's what I'm saying, he won't be here at the next meeting.
Again, I said, "Let's let it go to the next meeting."
Okay.
We'll be good.
I got you.
If that's the wish of the Council.
No objection from me.
All right, somebody make a motion. Oh, you did. Second the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Next up on the agenda, Max. Conditional, 3519, 3927 Pleasant Plains, CZTC dash one, conditional zoning.
Hello, Council. I have a habit of pushing this away from my mouth, so just let me know if I push it away and you can't hear me. So, I apologize. Let me get my notes ready, and I'll be ready to present in just one second. I just did it. All right. All right, so this is, like Mr. Shoal said, conditional zoning, CZ250203 for 3919 and 3927 Pleasant Plains Town Center 1. We actually heard this back in July, and staff presented it. I'm actually going to skip a slide. So, July 14, 2025, staff presented this case, and Council deferred it to September 8. Council asked for more detail on the building elevations to ensure alignment with Town Center vision, the Council's vision of the Town Center, as well as clarity on future commercial partners. Just ignore the no updated materials that were submitted. They have submitted a new presentation that they are going to present tonight. I just did not update my presentation with their updates. They have not changed the site plan. They have not changed the uses. They're just going to present what Council's requested with the elevations and the commercial partners. But I was, just, some of the council members were not here during that July 14 meeting, so I'm going to briefly run through the proposal. Mona T. LLC requests the conditional zoning for two parcels, 2.63 acres in size, for 12 shopfront, commercial and retail uses along Pleasant Plains Road, which is retail and commercial on the bottom and residential up top, and 23 townhomes in the rear. And the 23 townhomes can go up to three stories, so they have a mix of two- and three-story townhomes. This is the site plan. At the bottom of the page, that's Pleasant Plains Road. And then, there's streetscape, which the applicant's presenting, an 18-foot greenway. Our streetscape plan, staff did, we did a lot of research in different types of streetscapes around the area, and we found that this 18 feet is consistent. And staff thinks it's consistent with our streetscape plan as well. And then, behind the shopfront, then behind the streetscape are shopfront units, 12 of them, then a parking lot, and then 23 townhomes. Here is a colored rendering, just a little bit easier to see. And the applicant's going to go over his presentation as well, so you can have, if you have any questions about what they're proposing. But as you can see, it's stubbing future connections to the adjacent parcels to the east and west. This is the aerial of the site. As you can see, there's two homes on there currently, surrounded by Town Center, which is all in blue along this area. And it's in the 12-mile creek watershed. The future land use plan designate this area as Town Center, and staff believes that Town Center is consistent with this use of shopfront and townhomes. Additionally, the small area plan for Town Center, which is in this, the whole thing is the Town Center Small Area Plan, but the specific areas in this red box, if you can see my mouse hovering, shows mixed-use and retail, and staff believes shopfront is, and the townhomes are consistent with that small area plan use. Additionally, I just went over the streetscape plan, and the staff believes it's consistent. Skipping over these, because these are everything that I presented last time. We've had, this is our fifth meeting on this item. We've had a neighborhood meeting, a subcommittee meeting, planning board, and this is our second town council meeting on this item. There is a bunch of conditions that staff has already placed on the site to get to where the site plan has been developed to. Staff's recommending approval with the staff suggested conditions that we're recommending removing these last two, that the streetscape shall comply with the typical, and the property must incorporate mill and/or stone. We're requesting to remove those two items. But there, to the right, which was submitted in the packet, there's a long list of other conditions as well. So, I don't want to go through all of them, but it pretty much is site design where things are placed along the site plan. And sorry, I went through that pretty fast.
Those two, and it was like, wow, this is awful specific.
Yeah. Yeah, so sorry about going through it really fast. It's just the second time presenting, and I wanted to make sure I didn't go through every last detail double. Do you have any new questions for me for this specific proposal? And the applicant's here as well. He has updated his presentation. He'd like to present that.
Okay, so we're getting something new that wasn't in the packet tonight, a site plan or rendering?
The site plan is the same, but you'll all be seeing some, I think they have submitted, we incorporated their updated presentation in the packet. I just wasn't able to update my presentation.
Wait a minute, so we're not getting the updated presentation?
You are from the applicant, but not from staff.
But we haven't seen it yet. Is that correct?
It is included in the packet.
Oh, it is included in the packet. Oh, okay.
Yeah. I was on vacation for two weeks, and I wasn't able to update my presentation before this agenda was submitted.
Okay, got it.
So, apologize on that. But the site plan itself has not changed, and the uses have not changed. So, everything I presented is still fact, true.
So, I did actually have a question.
Of course.
Because I didn't see it in here. I thought we had brought up the concern of when the commercial would be developed, and then, along with the residential. So, you know, I think one of the concerns we always have with this, these type of projects, is commercial comes last and then may never get built at all. So, you know, what, is there anything in here about that where they don't get their certificate of occupancy for, say, half their townhomes until commercial?
So, staff did not include that as part of the proposal, but if you wanted to add that as part of the conditions, the applicant would have to agree to it. And the reasoning is, is because this is our first Town Center development with streetscape, and we wanted to make sure the hurdles weren't so far deep that they were unable to build this product. So, we didn't add any of those, any of the conditions where you have to build a commercial first. We just didn't add a timeline for that. But if Council wishes to include that, you can definitely include that. But the applicant's here, and I'm going to pull up his presentation. I'll be sitting right there if you have any questions for me.
Can you tell us what page number it is in our packet? There's a lot of similar pictures. The packets somewhat, they're all very similar. Where's theirs begin?
I think it's 63 is when their presentation starts. I don't know if it's the same on this versus what he's seeing.
Probably. It looks like that.
Yep. I'm going to pull up his PowerPoint right now.
All righty, before we get any further, let's reopen the public hearing. And we already heard from staff, so here we go.
Okay, I'm going to do my best to talk on the microphone. I do have a loud voice, so I'm going to try to find balance. So, again, my name is Steve Singleton, Urban Design Partners, representing our client, who's the applicant for this rezoning. The presentation that you have in your packet is similar to the one tonight, but I did update a little further to address more of the concerns or questions, comments that came from the last council meeting. So, the goal tonight is to address a lot of those concerns or questions that came up last time, and then kind of circle back to some of the bigger, the bigger, I guess, defining features of the development, which is again, the streetscape scale and the look and feel of the development. So, in no particular order, and these are not in the presentation, but from notes over the council presentation last time, some of the comments that were addressed from Council was relative to if we had a development partner. So, and I'm not sure how else to address that, other than the fact that the applicant is the developer. They are an experienced contractor, so they're, two of them are here tonight. They're local. They live in Union County. The site 3919, which is the subject property of this rezoning, is where their office and operations has been for 20 years. So, they're, you know, right here around the corner and vested and interested in the success of this project. Their primary development is high-end custom home building and mixed-use commercial. And they currently have a similar project that's wrapping up up in Gastonia, which is also a shopfront-type retail commercial first floor with residential over the top. So, they do have experience in delivering. A- as far as, um, so they're the developer and, and some of the other things I heard though potentially were if we had tenants involved already or committed already. And so that, we don't, um, I think typical to a, a larger commercial development where you have anchor tenants. Say Publix or some sort of, of, um, anchor tenant, that would happen in, at this stage of the process. And those anchor tenants then help attract, um, additional smaller tenants to those shopping centers or developments. But in this case, small neighborhood residential scale, um, development. It's, it's kinda rare that we would have tenants committed at this stage without approval. Certainly, uh, rezoning approval, let alone design and, and, and construction, um, commenced. So I think that would be the, the right time. Additionally, I wanted to point out too, so, some of the other things that had come up in the last meeting was about concern over the variety of imagery and architectural form that might have been presented. So tonight, when I do present, I'm gonna try to scale that down a little more, um, a little more precision on the look and feel that we're going after. So that'll be addressed here in the presentation. The streetscape will also be touched on. And then some of the other concerns were relative to the scale of the development. And someone, I think Wyatt actually had asked about if the two and three-story products would complement the adjacent neighborhood. So just, just for the sake of addressing that question. Once these homes that are on Pleasant Plains and certainly around the corner on Potter Road. I mean, those are probably gonna be developed at some point in your future, certainly if we achieve the, the town zoning district and the vision that, that we have. With the adopted plan and those developments would certainly be two-story, perhaps three-story. I think the scale's gonna come around as the development occurs for the town center development. So I'm gonna move on to the presentation. A lot of this we already saw last time, so I won't, I'm not gonna spend too much time on it. Max actually kinda gave you guys the overview, so we know where we, where we're at. We're definitely in the town center zoning district. And then kind of a little more about what the town center is, which I don't wanna read verbatim, cause we all know what that is here tonight. So for our presentation, and last time we, we, we really got into the streetscape, so this is the same slide as last time. But if you recall, we kinda talked about how the, the, the building height to, uh, width, the street width, there's a ratio typically. And so I don't wanna touch on that too much, but we, we start talking about how twenty-four foot or even thirty foot might actually be too big. And they're, that's detrimental to the overall look and feel and success if you have too big of a streetscape. I know Stephen, you had mentioned and maybe others, that you guys may reconvene or, or give some consideration to right sizing that streetscape. And I don't know that we have that ans, I don't know if you guys have that answer tonight, but for us personally, we have some more things to share relative to the streetscape. This too was in the presentation previously, but this was, these are images of Charleston, one of the most walkable cities in the country. A lot of first-floor retail, commercial retail, it's very active, a lot of energy. And their code has no more than twelve-foot wide street, um, sidewalks, which functions very well. So, some new stuff here though, for, eh, high level, we did an analysis on kind of average street widths throughout the Carolinas. And, yeah, I don't wanna read all these verbatim, but, you know, typically five to six foot, but we, we found that six to eight, um, with, with planting zones. Certainly in your big urban cores like downtown Charlotte, as we talked about, you're gonna get those ten to twelve and obviously sometimes larger. And then even Ashdo talks about eight to twelve being that right size for, for towns. There's also quite a bit of, uh, planning principle where anything over fifteen foot is considered a reserve for civic or plaza space. So again, if you get too large, you run the risk of appearing desolate based on the anticipated use. And given that this is the first project and kind of setting the precedent, currently there's not a lot of people, pedestrians on Pleasant Plains. And, and, and even if this development were developed, a- until we have more, um, development that anchors the, the street, if you will, left to right or all the way down the street, it's kinda hard to envision a lot of pedestrian activity, so. What we're, what we're proposing and what we think would be correct to do, and based on evaluation of peer town standards and best practices. We believe that twelve minimum to eighteen foot, as we currently show on our plan, is kind of the right size for stylings. Which provides more scale. The financial responsible is not so much about developer cost, it's more about long-term maintenance costs. So keeping that in mind with this, with the size. And then we believe that it's, again, better aligned to the anticipated volumes. Our, our recommendation as well would be to consider a phased approach to the streetscape. So I think for the rezoning or purpose of rezoning, we can, we can hit the eighteen-foot sidewalk, if you will, but in this graphic, instead of doing the six-foot utility strip, the paver utility strip between the uh, back of curb and sidewalk, we could leave that green. This is just a recommendation on our end, but we could go twelve-foot concrete for that pedestrian zone. And then keep the pavers green until a time that you have more development come online. So if you have more development as you move towards Potter Road around the corner, certainly like across the street on Pleasant Plains. Once you have more development and you have more pedestrian activity, that would warrant widening that sidewalk and going from landscape to pavers. A lot of, um, as we work into kind of look and feel. We did kinda, we take a step back and kind of looked at the architectural character of stylings. So I don't wanna read all this, but through, um, driving around, certainly a desk crit, if you will, and, and what we know from stylings, these are some of the, the identity or identifying precedent features that you guys currently have in the community based on your architecture. So, you know, several of the structures here obviously, um, would be some of that precedent. A lot of brick, certainly stone, and then a lot of your residential also uses things like gabled roofs, um, dormer and certainly porches. So that sense of entry is really important, um, if not a porch. And then the gabled roof to break up the monotony of large roofs, um, awnings for the shopfront. We've even got metal roofs up here for more of a traditional, um, use, if you will. Let's see, and then the church as well, just kind of, uh, it's kinda hard to see in the graphic, but the church does a good job of showing the gabled roof. But more of a craftsman style with some of the craftsman supports, um, under the, the eve. So those are just some of the precedents that we identified in stylings. These are the precedents that are also most common in stylings. So if we take some of that and apply that to the townhomes, if you will, this is kind of the, um, design that we have come up with for the townhomes. So, uh, as Max said, up to three stories, staggering the façades or projecting bays to, to break up the monotony of the buildings. The stone base or brick around the bottom of the buildings was something that we also would commit to, so eighteen inch at minimum. Most likely more stone, uh, with your board and baton, so variety of materiality, if you will. And then again, touch on the front porches or that sense of entry. So if you look kinda here then, this is just a representative, it's not, it's not our design, it's a representative of our design. This captures a lot of those design features that we've identified that are precedents in the community. So you've got the dormer windows, the gabled roofs to break up the monotony of the buildings. You've got the projections, uh, or, or, um, yeah, for the, sorry. The projecting bays, if you will, that protrude out from the building face. We've got some sense of entry, sort of focus on the doors and that sense of entry, and then again, some of the craftsman detailing. And then this would be just another example that kind of captures some of those precedent imagery, so. Maybe a different take is a two-story, but again, ma- uh, uh, materiality, stone and brick. We talked about some color, um, which is earthy or muted colors. And then again, that kind of craftsman style at the, at the doorways. So, uh, on our plan, we do have the three-story garage, and then we have the surface park as well, which this is what that would be. Shopfront's a little, um, different for us to kinda get to get correct, and our hope is that, you know, we continue to work with, with planning staff as we work through, um, the permitting for, for shopfront. But again, t- from, from precedent in the community, these are some of the defining characteristics that we believe would apply. The, the two-story, we believe is the, the right size scale, potentially three, but again, the two-story seems to be the precedent, um, here in stylings. Again, talking about the arcades and covered walkways for pedestrian comfort, that would also be like the awnings that you see typical of shopfronts. And then again, brick and stone. Uh, we also think that there's a good, um, opportunity to apply some modern features as well, so not just all brick like Matthews does or others, but a good complementary of, of materiality, if you will, applied to the buildings. And then of, uh, ultimately the design identities, we're looking to create like a village with this development. So the goal would be unifying features to connect the shopfront to the townhomes in the back. And we believe the best layer to do that would be through the materiality. So with some of the, the stone, uh, cast stone accents, the, the brick and, and stone. And again, maybe some of the covered porches or awnings and that sense of entry. We don't have elevations yet because we feel like it still needs to be further developed, but these are local shopfront-style buildings that we believe are applicable. We don't wanna create history, cause there's not historic buildings here, but what we do wanna do is achieve some of the, the presence that we've identified in your community. So again, the brick, two-story, potentially flat roof with, with, uh, parapets and, and cornices. And then a lot of detail given to that first floor experience, so the shopfront, some individuality with each building or unit. And maybe in the lower right one, which is a Matthews, but that kind of delineation between shopfront, the first floor retail, and then the upper floor being residential, so a different material, and then craftsman detailing as well. So in summary, this is kind of what we're looking for, right? We wanna, th- our client is, is committed. No doubt they can deliver a high-quality product. And what we're asking for is partnership with the town of stylings, so, uh, we'll continue to partner with planning, obviously, uh, with council. But the goal is to partner to get, to deliver this project. This is a precedent. In, in stylings, we're not missed on the importance of the project. We certainly wanna get it right and the client, my client wants to do that as well. One thing that we believe would help, that we don't currently have, would be some design framework. So whether, um, there's a, a way to come up with some d- design guidelines to help as we advance and move this forward, but that would also provide consistency for others as they, as they also developed and came online in the, uh, town center zoning district. No need to touch on the streetscape again, but we do believe that twelve to eighteen foot is the right size. So, and then finally, I would ask though, that, of council, and of course, we're gonna talk about some, you know, take questions and talk about this. But if, you know, we would like to get either conditional approval, would be great if we could get to a point, or maybe we defer. But we, we wanna make sure that we're working again with you guys to get approval on this as we move forward, so just consider that as we're, um, talking about that tonight.
All right, is there, are you about?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Sorry.
All right, thank you for the presentation. It is a public hearing, so if there's any folks from the audience that have, uh, want to speak on this issue, now's your turn. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, um, council discussion, questions?
I'm, I'm a bit confused about, um...
Speak.
Can you hear me now? Um, I'm a bit confused about the architecture. Say, let's start with the commercial. You're showing us that might be, look like this and brick here, and, and then this one might look like this, and so I, I'd like to see what exactly you're going to do. And also with the commercial, I understand you don't have a partner, but you could still show us, you know, show us twelve, um, shop, shopfronts. And then somebody comes in and they need more room and, you know, so you can change it. You go to Max and say, this, I need to change this, but I, I just, I don't see how we can approve this with not knowing anything. I don't remember exactly what we all talked about, um, at the last meeting, but I know the mayor said, you know, when we were, um, giving a, a motion, that there's a lot of things that need to be addressed and come back on September eighth, and I not sure what exactly is addressed. Pro, you know, concrete. Something different, because we've already seen maybe this, maybe that.
True. Well, I guess my question would be though, can you add clarity on, on the, what you mean by the, um, shopfront, like tenants?
Yeah.
You want us to know who our tenants are?
No, I know that you don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But we need to know what it's going to look like.
Sure.
This is our town center and it's, y- you know, we're concerned about it and we don't know exactly what you're, what you wanna, you're not telling us what you're proposing.
Sure, well, I think that-
You know, we might do this, we might do that, and, uh, I mean, they're beautiful, but I don't know exactly what you're proposing here.
Well, for us though, we, I mean, a- as far as I understand, the, the architectural elevations are reviewed during design and permitting. So perhaps I'm incorrect with that.
Well, Max does like a site plan, but this is a, um, rezoning or conditional rezoning.
Now, or, I, can I, can I, can I segment her?
Yeah, 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 sure.
So as part of the conditional zoning, um, as part of the conditional zoning, they're not required to submit elevations. But we did ha, they can, but they, they have shown a vision to what is going to happen. We have a condition in the conditional zoning notes that state all e- elevations are gonna go back to planning board for approval at the time of site plan review. So they'd have to go through major site plan review through staff. And then before the elevations are approved, it'll go to, back to planning board. If you, if you wanted to come back to council, you can. But we've historically, in our other conditional zonings, have brought elevations to planning board.
Yeah, you brought them to us, too.
Can I? Ask one quick question, cause I was, I was under the impression that we couldn't ask about architectural elements. We could-
Conditional rezoning.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
So if you wanna make a condition that, um, the specific architectural guidelines that he put in the presentation as a condition, as part of the way the elevations are gonna look, you could ask for that. But he does not have the specific, exact rendering of what he's going to build. He did provide a, a vision though, as well. Cause that's some, something we just don't require in the conditional zoning submittal. But if the council wants it, you still can request it.
I definitely want to.
I mean, do you want it now, or do you want it to come back to council? It, like, one of the conditions would be come back to council.
Cause right now it goes back to planning board. If it was approved, the elevations go back to planning board.
Yeah, I was just clarifying.
Yeah, but it was up to you and the applicant to agree upon that, if you wanted to go back to council instead.
Okay.
Does that help answer your question? What more?
No. It's, say, okay, you're saying we don't have to look at it, but what are we looking at? We're just looking at, I mean, it's a, I like this, um...
So the council, I don't, I don't know where in your presentation the-
I like this pros, project.
The site plan.
I don't have issues with, you know, having the stores and having some townhou, townhouses.
Yeah, so as part of our cond- Yeah, so as part of our conditional zoning process, the applicants are required to submit a site plan and then go through the conditional zoning process. They're not required to go through the elevations. So if you want to see elevations, what I would recommend, so they, say submit this as part of their conditional zoning and the uses and the density and the setbacks, things like that. If you want to see elevations, I would say request that to be at a future meeting. Or put specific elevation guidelines for what his vision is and put a condition on it and have it come back to council. Other than that, there's no specific guidelines that the staff can enforce him to submit for elevations at this time.
When you said the uses are part of the conditional, we don't know the uses.
So the uses are the townhomes, the 23 townhomes and the 12 shop front uses.
Know the uses in the commercial.
So the commercial will be anything that's allowed in town center zoning.
It'll be what?
Anything, so this is a conditional zoning town center, so CZTC.
Yeah.
So any of the uses that are permitted, along with the shop front and the 23 townhomes are, would be permitted for the commercials. So for example, like real estate offices, hair salons are allowed in town center. That's something they could have flexibility.
We're not going to know the, the uses. We're just going to know like here's, hmm.
One of the uses though, that we did recommend, no vape stores, that's in the conditions. No vape, tobacco and CBD, stuff like that. But you, you will not have control over the exact specific tenants because they could rotate, you know, things like that.
Yeah, that's all right.
Unless there's something that you want to disallow, but that's, that would come up now. But we've, we've kind of went over the town center uses and I think that would be the only one.
Graham, you had something?
Well.
Graham.
Hey Lori, what, what if?
Graham.
No, no, no. I was just going to ask Lori, I mean, would you be okay saying that? Like if we asked Steve to bring back elevations at, at the appropriate time in the process for council to review?
So, you know, our condition says that the elevations will be brought to planning board during site plan review process. You could say council so that you feel more comfortable.
Okay.
But they'll get approval for the site plan.
But the, the townhomes, you have to, before you start building, you have to know what you're going to build. You know, what, what's the facade going to look like? I don't know.
They do site plan wise, for sure. And unless they develop the proposal, they'll bring that forward. It's very, so when, you know, developers bring us conditional zonings, they're still very early in the process. They haven't done all the site reviewed because they haven't received approval from the town to build this product. So if you want a specific condition for elevations and things like that, or what it's going to look like, you definitely can add that to the conditional zoning.
One of the concerns I have on this and any other project that's either come before us or will come before us is when it's MU2, mixed use, we have not been getting the, the commercial part of it in some cases at all. I would like to figure out how we're going to make sure that this commercial piece actually gets built. How do we, how do we come to an agreement where it will get built on this and, and any future project? Yes, what we've been talking about, but that's a big issue to me that needs to be resolved.
I would say I would probably turn that over to the applicant, see if they have any ideas. I know we've talked about it. I think they've agreed to, we, we've talked about it, the applicant. We've talked about so many different conditions over the last few months, so forgive me. But I would say one of the conditions that I would like to make, see if the applicant would agree to is at least, so you would say, I think it was six, it was half.
Five.
Or is it six?
I think it's six because it's half. So, so this is why, we didn't add, this is why I didn't add this condition. But we would recommend that at least half the shop front uses are built before the rest of the development.
What do you mean the rest?
Yeah, what does that mean, the rest? Certain COA, what, half? All?
Yes, it would be certificate, so zoning compliance. So they would, we would recommend that they receive six zoning compliances for the shop front units before they are able to build the rest of the shop front units and the townhomes.
Oh.
Say that again, please.
They don't want to build the.
So they're requesting 12 shop front units and 23 townhomes. One, one thing that I think we've discussed, and I don't know if the applicant hasn't specifically agreed to, that's why it's not in the conditions. And we recommend that there be six shop front units, receive zoning compliance approval, which are inspections by staff, before they are able to build the other shop front units, the six other ones and the 23 townhomes. So then you have a commitment that there's six commercial shop front units built already.
I'd rather see the commitment being some of the back, the townhomes, not just the, the half and half.
I think we'd be, I think we'd be up into like six zoning, we're just.
Zoning compliance.
Zoning compliance for six of the shop fronts before certificate, certificate of occupancy is issued for townhomes. But I think we'd want to be building those simultaneously with the shop front. Does that make sense?
I'd be okay with that as well, because we've had that condition before in other developments.
Wait, what exactly is it that?
I think you're, I think this Town of Styllings does zoning compliances and then Union County does certificate of occupancies. So I think that's a little bit of a, it's a word play. I use zoning compliances because I can't require the county to do certificate of occupancies.
Okay.
So I would prefer language of zoning compliance. We don't have a building inspections department.
Right.
Okay.
We should.
Okay.
I would say maybe it might be better to have these conditions written down and brought back to another meeting. Sounds like we're getting where we may need more information presented, like exact, maybe a presentation on what the conditions are actually are instead of the develop, what the development is. I think that might be helpful for council.
I agree.
I'd like to work through them though tonight.
Yeah.
If possible, so that we kind of have everything.
Of course.
Yeah.
There's two in my mind, two pretty important ones in my mind. I already mentioned the first one was how do we ensure that the commercial will be built? And the second one would be, we need to decide on the sidewalk width, not just for this project, but what is our town guidelines going to be? Because this will set the precedent. It will no longer be whatever we have already decided it's going to be. It's going to be whatever we allow this one. So I think in the, in the, for trying to be consistent, this will set the precedent for everything else that goes on that side of the road. We need to know what that number is and we're happy with it. And all of them have that going forward as well. So the project looks decent, but there's a couple of nitty gritty details that I think need to be ironed out because this is kind of the first one, well, not the kind of, it is.
Yeah, it's precedent.
So I think we have verbally agreed to maybe a condition for the commercial component.
Okay.
And then the streetscape, what they're proposing is 18 feet wide. Our typical streetscape in our adopted plan is 22 feet wide. So they're requesting a reduction for four feet. Staff is bringing back a, a streetscape plan amendment later this year. We're still in the midst of redoing all of that. We do think that the 18 feet is going to be compliant with what they're, what we're going to bring back in the future. But we've done a lot of measurements. We've actually gone through many different town towns and town centers. There's all different types of widths throughout all different downtowns, not consistent on one street. There's also different types of elevations and development. So, you know, we believe that the 18 feet would, would not be a detriment to the rest of the streetscape in the area. Because if you go to downtown Matthews, it, it meanders through widths, same with Waxall. So four feet may not be actually noticeable by, by I as well. So, but just want to let you know, we are bringing that back to town council later this year. And our planning staff's working on an amendment for the streetscape plan. But that will likely be back even after this development would be brought back. So it would take, it's going to be several months before we even bring that streetscape to you.
So a question on that, the 18 feet, is that all sidewalk or is that the sidewalk with the grass? 12-foot concrete and six-foot pavers.
I actually wrote this down for you.
Okay.
So what they're proposing is the two-foot curb and gutter, which is typical, usually is two to two and a half feet. And they're proposing a six-foot paver. He presented maybe it being landscaped in a period with a phased development and a 12-foot multi-use path. So just imagine a six-foot paver, 12-foot multi-use path.
What do you mean, consider it being landscaped?
As a part of a phased development, he can provide phases on his site plan for, per site plan review. And it might be landscaped until it's connected. But he would be required to end up putting six-foot pavers in the 12-foot multi-use path. Now, our plan shows a six-foot paver and a 14-foot multi-use path. So he's reducing that multi-use path.
Down to 10 feet?
12, 12.
I thought you said it was, he's reducing it by four feet.
So I have.
Total, he's reducing the paver strip from six.
Okay, sorry, I missed that part.
Oh.
A little bit confused, there's a lot of numbers that were just.
It's a little confusing, which.
Out there. And we have, he has a picture of it, if you want to see that again. The one we're proposing. I should probably stand with you. So my recommendation is to bring back specific conditions. How about we have a, a condition on the number of commercial retail developments that are brought back? Or excuse me, that receives CO or zoning compliances.
Okay.
And a specific condition on the exact streetscape, what's going to happen. Because right now it's kind of tied to the site plan. Maybe we'll have a written condition specifically addressed to streetscape.
And then the third one, which isn't a, isn't a rush, it's, the elevations will go to council, not planning board.
Or we can.
At that point.
You can, would you want that to be brought back to council? Or do you want to see concrete elevations now?
We don't have them.
Yeah, I think.
Well, we can bring it, he can bring them back.
I think I'm okay, I mean, I.
No, just when they're done.
Yeah, when they're done, yeah.
Is that the consensus? We're good.
Are you good?
Just those two that are more at the next meeting or were thereabouts.
Having them come back when they're done?
Later on, when the elevations are.
When they have the elevations.
Concrete, is that what you meant, concrete done?
So when they're finished?
They're saying.
I was thinking, no, we never talked about a finished being concrete.
No, I apologize. So is that something that you want to defer to another meeting or do you want to just add those conditions now?
Well, I don't think we're quite ready to talk about the two of them.
For the commercial and the, you know.
You just want to have us put it on the agenda when they're ready or instead of a specific date?
Good point.
Is that okay?
Council in agreement on bringing it forward once these.
I, I had some additional items.
Go ahead, Graham.
So, and I'm sorry not to.
All right.
Beat the dead horse. So on the commercial side, you know, I'm, I'm looking here and it, it looks like you're essentially proposing 11,550, or sorry, 455 square feet of commercial. And then we're talking about like six shops versus, you know, five or. My one thought on that is if you change, I don't necessarily want to hamstring you so that if you're, or ourselves even, if something changes because you don't have tenants potentially lined up, I would rather it be a certain square footage that's built, that's tied to the certificate of occupancy than shops. Because if you say get, decide along the way, we can get some restaurant in here or a cafe, then, you know, that may change. Or say you do like pocket stores. So I don't want to necessarily tie it to the number of stores, but the actual square footage. And then the other item concern, not concern, question I have is the pavers. How do we ensure that if it's landscaping and then you're saying it's in phases, that when all those phases are completed, the pavers go in? So I, I think we lose our.
The conditions, for sure, both at those points.
Okay.
But I would just say that we can make a combination of six or certain, certain amount of square footage of commercial. I think I like that.
Yeah.
For sure. And then have a phased approach to a condition for the streetscape.
I mean, is, just out of curiosity, I mean, it seems like there's two buildings there. I mean, I'm assuming what you meant is one of those buildings would get built and then the, okay, okay. I mean.
Okay, Dave, are you okay? I'm not understanding, they're, they're going to finish all the townhouses in the back? Or are we going to let them do, I don't know, how many are there, 30 something?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. In the back, not in the back of this, in the whole.
Behind the shop front unit.
Okay. So you're saying you want to, some kind of a condition making sure that the commercial is in before and they want to.
Not before it's entirely finished, but before a certain number or.
Right, that's what I mean. I mean, what number?
Phase it, and that's what we're going to talk about.
We're going to do that now, okay.
No, not now.
Not now.
How about we bring.
Oh, okay.
Just defer it to when we have those conditions finalized and then I'll put it on the agenda for consideration. So you guys can put it back on the agenda when, when it's ready. I don't want to give it to, I don't want to put a stipulation that'll be next meeting.
That's fine.
But it will be back at a future meeting soon.
Can we have an idea of when that will be?
Yeah, we could do October, in October, one of the October meetings, we could do that.
I mean.
Or do you want it to be at the next meeting?
Wouldn't that be next meeting?
Next meeting, September 22nd.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
We have two, two in our month.
We're going to just do an October meeting if you, if you guys would like to make a vote on that or a deferral to that.
To whatever, are you specifically deciding a date or did you just say until?
It's in October.
I mean, once the, the planning department is confirmed with the applicant, I know there's some loose ends. There are probably some details that I think everybody would feel comfortable with, that they need to talk, hear the concerns that they've heard and then come back at one of those October meetings. So if, if y'all are comfortable with that applicants, then we can work with y'all on the exactness of the conditions and then come back hopefully for an approval.
Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make sure we had an idea of when we could be heard again. I'm sure my clients don't want to wait till January is what I was getting at, so, okay.
I kind of want to get it over with for you too. And I think we're close, but there's a couple of loose ends that we're going to get down in the weeds if we continue tonight and do that. That's something staff can take care of and.
I think it's more up to you than us because you have, you know, several items that you have to be ready to show us. You know, we'll put you on anytime, I don't care.
Well, yeah, the hard part for us though is there's not a whole lot of clarity on, I mean, we're getting there, right? But there's nothing that specifically tells us what we need to be trying to achieve or, like, there's no design guidelines, if you will. And so it's somewhat ambiguous. And so I think for us, that's the hard part is we can go back to the drawing board, but.
Well, let's.
What are we designing to, right?
Okay, but we just clarified four, just, just the four items, that's what we're looking for, right? And four conditions?
So, friend, the next presentation, we'll, we'll bring those items back, those conditions.
Can you tell me what the four are, just to make sure I have them?
We write them down too. I was going to listen to the minutes, but now I, I'll write them down for you.
Yeah, so I think.
Okay, landscaping and the.
So we'll bring back streetscape.
That the same as sidewalk width?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Stretchescape and sidewalk width with phasing.
With phasing. So, so I had that as two different things on my list, because I had the sidewalk width and the phasing.
One condition though.
Okay, but that's two of the four that I captured.
All right.
And then how much commercial will be built prior to the rest of the development?
Okay.
Essentially just those two.
Or zoning compliance, yeah.
Well, no, I think.
And elevation.
Yeah, I think.
But that.
Or just design guideline specifically written out of what we're looking for.
Well.
Well, if he says that he's close, that they're close, I mean, we just want a general picture so that we know. So, you know, if, like I say, with something else, if you go to Max and say, I, you know, we can't do these awnings, we have to, I don't know, whatever. That's okay. But I just want to see. But I just want to see what the plan is.
And I think that was the first, my first bullet. We already decided that if we approve this project as part of the CZ, you will have the renderings of the actual parcel of, uh, the, the units at that point. Normally have to go to planning board, we just wanted to detour them to council.
During site plan review.
So you're saying the building elevations are going to be due at the next council?
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, that's, that's why I say there's only two important ones, in my opinion, which is sidewalk width and streetscape, two for him. And then the, the commercial count, at some point, we got to figure out how we're going to make that happen. And then I think we're fine.
Hey, 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 Dave, I think, I think there has to be a condition that says that it, that they agree to, that it comes to council for review.
Yeah, I'll just change the wording and say it goes to town council instead of planning board because that condition's already in there.
Okay, okay, all right, that's fine.
And I would like to throw one thing in the hopper, not to solve tonight, but to ask Max, y'all to talk with the applicant. One of the things we see in our comprehensive land use plan, in our board strategic plan about starting a, a town center, right, and developing it, and we saw in, in the great example of Charleston, is interconnectivity, right? Both from a automobile, but in some ways, more importantly, from a pedestrian connection. And what that looks like in practice is most likely like a grid layout, right? And I love on the site plan, you've got the connections on the side there, that's great, we love it. We hope to kind of continue the kind of commercial and really create that walkability and connectivity. I was curious about the, um, the stub on the back. I didn't see a note on there, uh, that that could be a future connection. And again, that's not for solving tonight, but I would just ask y'all to talk with our planning staff and see if that's workable somehow to make that a future connection as well.
Well, wouldn't that be, um, the super Old Monroe widening?
There's, there is a small parcel in between, so we'll, we'll go, we'll discuss that after the council.
Okay, okay.
And it may not be, very well not be feasible. I don't think right here is the appropriate setting to work out the details, but maybe talking about it and then coming back when we've thought through that, unless there's any opposition on the board, that idea of trying to get that interconnected.
Oh, no, I love connectivity.
Because really, when we look at Old Monroe Road, especially as, after the new development, the board has done a lot of things with the redesign to try to eliminate some of the street, super street. But really, it's going to be a barrier. And what we don't want to do is to make it a barrier between the park over here and that side, right? We want people to, able to get to both sides freely. And so I think it's important, we think about that interconnectivity as we start looking at, um, these developments. So, thank you, thank you guys.
We had actually met with Brad Richardson too at some point and he brought that up as well. Um, and I don't know, we're going to figure that out with this development, but it'd be great if there were a way to cross Old Monroe. And I think there's a future greenway that comes down the north side of Old Monroe, so that connection was discussed.
That'd be great. It's great, it's great for the community and I think you'll hopefully get a better quality of a tenant, right? If they can tap in and look in that circle.
Sure.
And see more rooftops, right, to serve those businesses.
Hundred percent, yep.
Thank you for your presentation and time tonight.
Sorry not to beat. Beat a dead horse again. Uh, the, I just want to make sure that applicant's not walking away without guidance from us. Did we, have we given any guidance on the streetscape or is that something we're going to talk about later? In terms of, because I, I know you're requesting the four-foot deviation, two on the sidewalk, two on the pavers, right, reduction? So I just want to be sure we're.
I think we'll have a lot of communication with Max before we finish with the, this again.
Okay.
We'll work through that, that's solvable on the, on the streetscape sizing. Otherwise, I, I think in, in listening to the developer's, uh, presentation and in talking with Mr. Shong, you know, uh, you don't want your streetscape to be too cookie cutter. It almost looks sterile, right? If you see in a lot of successful downtowns, it's almost mismatched in all the best way. If it's too uniform, it can almost look corporate in the, in the worst ways, right? And so I think that's something we can accommodate and work through, both for the success of the town and for the.
Maybe, maybe the.
Graham, are you looking for the caliper of trees?
No, 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 I'm just purely on the size because there's a deviation from our current size being requested, or width, sorry. And.
Okay.
So I don't want it to be, you're coming back later on and like.
Well, this is something that if we have a consensus here, we'll be directing Max to get in discussion and.
Yeah.
Line this up better so everyone is in agreement.
We can see it up a little bit better for y'all so you can very clearly see what the are. Otherwise, it, it feels a little bit like we're trying to kind of hold air in our hands.
Yeah. Hey, David, maybe, maybe it would be, I mean, worth a, at least like a, um, a call here. I mean, I'm personally okay with the smaller streetscape. I mean, obviously coming tonight, I thought that was eighteen feet. Maybe it's just kind of get a feel from the rest of the folks whether or not that's even something that we're interested in or okay with.
I'm not ready to say that yet because it affects the entire street.
Okay.
And I don't want to deviate from what we've already given a lot of thought to, to something that we've given twenty minutes worth of thought to. Some of us, you've been on.
Yeah.
You've been involved a lot more, but.
Yeah, yeah.
For those of us who weren't, who weren't on that committee, I would rather give it a little more thought and, and direction before we change that entire streetscape for TC.
That's fair, that's fair.
And I'm not saying I don't like the eighteen, I just need to make sure we're positive that's exactly what we want.
That's fair.
We're all in consensus? We don't need a vote?
Can you make a mo- a motion to defer the decision until the October meeting?
I make a motion to defer until the decision on this project to the, an October meeting, an October meeting.
But are you going to give him specific?
No, we already did. Now we're just doing a motion to defer.
Okay.
Well, what do you, what do you mean?
You know, the landscaping, the commercial, the building.
Well, I mean, I think he's captured it. He captured that.
I'll, I'll also add the audio, I'll have the audio recording and everything. And I'll have all the.
All we're doing tonight is going to defer this to an October meeting. The motion is on the floor. If there's a second, I'll need a vote.
Second.
Second it.
All right, I think it was a tie, but, um.
Give it a little re.
Figure that out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your time. Max, thank you for your time. All right. Next up. Kevin, TX two-five dot zero eight dot zero one.
Yeah, evening council. Hopefully this one looks familiar because I brought this back in July. But since it was, I kind of put the cart before the horse on it because it's a text amendment to our U D O. So where I got your all's approval back in July, I didn't go through the formal processes, go into planning board, advertising, then ultimately having this public hearing here tonight about amending our T I A ordinance.
Well, before you do that, let me open the public hearing for this TX two-five dot zero eight dot zero one.
And happy to go in as much detail as, um, as possible, but ultimately what we're proposing is to amend our T I A ordinance to allow developers to hire their own consultants, to really just improve the efficiency of, of the overall process. Right now, the town really acts as a middleman between the developer, transportation consultants. Um, we have our own processes that we have to go through as government agencies and slow things down. Um, also, our, our bandwidth isn't as focused as a, an individual consultant hired by the developer could be. So this truly just gives the developer an option to hire their own consultant to perform T I As. And with that, the develop, at the cost of the developer, we would also hire our own consultant to assist us in reviewing those T I As. So we still maintain control, we are, we're doing our Q A, Q C overall, the, the developers work making sure it's in the best interest of the town and they're, everything looks, is passing the smell test. So that's, that's the short and sweet of it, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that, that's ultimately, it's truly just to improve efficiency.
So when you have a, um, T I A, it goes to the DOT, the state first? And then our consultant looks at it or how does that?
So right now, how the process works, developer comes in, they trigger, our T I A thresholds are different than N C D O Ts. N C D O Ts threshold is three thousand daily trips or three hundred A M P M peak hour trips. Ours is one thousand and one hundred respectively. So N C D O T is likely involved because all of our major thoroughfares are N C D O T maintained, so they will definitely be involved in the review. However, when it comes to their thresholds, sometimes they're triggered, sometimes they're not. Now, so developer comes in, they trigger a T I A, and then at that point, current process is, is we hire a consultant, the developer pays us, we pay that consultant. Everything has to get approved by council because T I As are likely more than thirty thousand dollars. And by our policy, we have to get council approval for any, any contract over, any purchase, any contract over three, thirty thousand dollars. Whereas what we're proposing is the consultant can just, they have our scoping meeting with us. We, they pay our consultant to do the review and then they can get going. So in theory, they could be done with data collection and starting to run their reports by the time we even get approval to get going. So that's just kind of the logistics that, that would be improved.
Yeah.
And, and optimized.
All right. I mean, this looked like the same thing that we saw before, exa- so.
It is, just the date changed.
Just, okay.
And there's a statement of reasonableness and consistency.
Okay.
That is required.
All right. I don't think we should approve it this time.
Planning board recommended approval, so.
All right, before we get to that, any, um, this is a public hearings, are anybody that'd like to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and council discussion and vote. All right, somebody do something then.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, text amendment TX twenty-five oh eight oh one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. This will do quite a bit for speeding up our approval processes or, or, or review processes, not approval, but we'll be able to review much quicker. All right, so we have a statement of consistency and reasonableness for zoning amendment TX twenty-five dot zero eight dot zero one. How much of that do I need to read?
Um, you need to read paragraphs one and two under the therefore.
Therefore, the amendment supports efficient and responsible growth by allowing qualified applicant retained consultants to prepare T I As while maintaining the town's oversight through a required independent review process. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it streamlines the development process, reduces delays associated with limited consultant availability, and aligns with best practices adopted by peer municipalities. It preserves the town's authority to ensure technical accuracy, policy compliance, and quality control through mandatory scoping meetings, memorandum of understanding, and third-party peer reviews. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
This next item is carryover from the last meeting in, um, which was in August, when council was asked to listen to a presentation on a potential project that was going to have sewer system, a, a, a new type of sewer system. And, um, well, just a large project that we weren't expecting. So the consensus, as I recall, I wasn't here at that meeting, so I believe Alex, that council asked for this to be carried over for further discussion today? Okay, that's why it's on today's agenda. So we can, my opinion is we should ask, let's see, Alex looking for discussion and staff direction. The, uh, discussion is, in my opinion, this is way too early to be talking about a pie in the sky hypothetical that is taking a lot of time and effort that it shouldn't and that we should direct our staff to do absolutely nothing until such time as it may or may not, hopefully, uh, come before council as a, as a proposal. That's my discussion item.
Do we need a vote?
I was hoping more discussion or not.
I, I think, I think at the time that it becomes a, I think, I think you're right. I think when it becomes necessary, I know that Max is working on like eight projects in my district. I don't think he needs to be directed to work on things that are hypothetical at the moment.
Any other comments down the way?
I agree.
Louder.
I, I agree.
I, I would echo that, I think it's premature and also, you know, I think there's multiple companies out there, so you, I don't even know what the purpose would be because if you study one, you may not get that company coming before you, so. Uh, and I don't think we should waste funds or time on something that isn't here.
So Alex, you asked for some direction, is that it or do you need a vote?
Uh, no, sir, I feel comfortable in the direction received, thank you.
All righty. That concludes item six from our agenda item tonight, that will not be brought, um, again forward. All right, um.
K nine.
K nine, chief. The additional K nine team, please.
Evening council.
Did you bring the dogs?
No, ma'am.
I think, I think we should delay this.
Yeah.
Until the dog's here.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't hear you. Um, I come tonight, uh, we have an opportunity to add a third K nine team to the police department. Uh, this is K nine Kane. When the wing at police department disbanded, um, uh, their K nine handler applied with us and we've issued, given him a conditional offer of employment. And we have been discussing, uh, the opportunity, let me back up here. Wingit, um, declared the dog surplus property and allowed him to purchase the dog. So he currently is the owner of K nine Kane. And we're hoping within the next two or three weeks that, uh, the officer will start working. Just a little bit about our history, uh, obviously, everybody knew K nine Lily. For, she came here in two thousand seventeen, uh, K nine Luna started in twenty-three and then in twenty-four, K nine Chase became active. Successes of our K nine program, Lily and Chase were both assigned to the, uh, H S I task force up at the airport. And over the times, I think it's been about three years total, um, the dogs combined and their handler, at the time Detective Smith, uh, seized over five thousand pounds of marijuana, twenty-five kilos of cocaine, two pounds of fentanyl, and over two million dollars in illegal currency. And then K nine Luna is our patrol K nine and she's, again, since, uh, twenty-twenty-three has developed into a very, uh, solid patrol dog. But just some benefits of adding this, sorry, yes, go ahead.
What's the difference, just in two sentences?
Um, of the two different.
Yeah.
One's assigned to the task force and they're looking strictly for drugs, bulk currency seizures. Patrol K nine works a patrol shift and is called when Stallings officers needs, needs a dog, Matthews, Met Hill, Indian Trail, even Monroe.
Tracking or what?
Tracking, uh, apprehension and narcotics detection. Those are the three things that our dogs are certified in. It's become very obvious or evident that it's beneficial to have a K nine on both sides of the way. Our rotations, the squad rotations work, uh, with only one dog. Only half of the patrol squads have access to that K nine, uh, while he's on duty. And on the other side, there's two, you know, two squads on each side. Uh, this would give us access to a dog on both sides of the rotation. For me, one of the big things is cost savings. This comes to us with very limited expenses, which I'll cover here on the next slide. And then having other opportunities within the department for officers to move into without getting promoted is always, uh, uh, an incentive to, for recruitment, retention. Uh, but costs, uh, so the wing at K nine was purchased under, as surplus property and then. And then, uh, their vehicle, his current canine vehicle, uh, I've talked, emailed with the town manager there and they're willing to sell it to us, um, for a fair price. Couple of things, our current canine budget is adequate. I don't need to come to you and ask for, for more money. Uh, it can absorb the cost of, of three dogs. But I would like to, uh, not exceed the cost of twenty eight thousand dollars to purchase the vehicle, uh, once we go into negotiation. And we would use asset forfeiture money, uh, which is restricted funds. We can only use for certain police related items to purch- make the purchase of that car if we can make that happen. So tonight I'd ask you to allow the manager and myself to create an agreement with this new officer, uh, to make the canine become an asset of the town. Obviously to cover under our insurance and our expenses for vet bills. While he's employed here, we would, we would need to be, uh, responsible for the dog and to allow us to negotiate a fair price, uh, with the town of Wingate for the canine vehicle. Again, not to exceed twenty eight thousand dollars. Uh, any questions for me?
Has the officer started working here?
Not yet. He will, hopefully will start in the next probably two weeks. He's been given a conditional offer of employment though.
Why is Wingate disbanding a police department?
I really can't speak to that. I mean, um, I know that recruitment, retention and police salaries, it's, it's, uh, I think the manager, I've kind of compared it to a war game. It's just an ongoing battle to try to get this limited number, um, of good qualified candidates and, you know, I think Wingate was, uh, an eight, eight officer police department, I think.
And we maybe had four.
Yeah.
That working? Like, yeah, it, it just, it couldn't, it wasn't working.
And this officer stayed on to the very end. I mean, he said, I'm, I, I was committed to be here and he stayed to the very end until they said, hey, turn your stuff in. So, um, but yeah, I can't really, just a lot of struggles in, in those areas. Any other questions?
Just, um, I mean, this dog does belong to this officer. So I assume that, I mean, if he decided to leave, he would take the dog with him then.
That is one of those things that I think the manager, I would need to negotiate and I'm sure include Melanie in on those pieces that, uh, and him and I've had this, uh, kind of off the record conversation. In my opinion, for, uh, insurance purposes, veterinary purposes, caretaking purposes, um, that dog would need to be an asset of the town. And I think it's, it would only be fair that if that officer were to decide to leave, that that asset would be turned back over, uh, to him if he made the decision to leave the town.
Okay, okay. Is that pretty normal?
Uh, I'll be honest, I have never run into this situation. I know other departments have, um, but I, our, two of our, two of our canine handlers have worked with this dog and they, they've spoken highly of him, of the dog and the handler, but it is also certified through the same certifying body that our current canines are certified through.
Yeah, I had a question on, so we, we have lent out two of our dogs to other, to the airport and is there a, are you thinking that we might do the same with this K nine Kane or would it like other police departments?
So Lily and Chase both worked with the HSI, uh, task force. Detective Smith got promoted to Sergeant Smith, so we are, he's back on patrol, so we're gonna try to, uh, find a handler, another handler in the department for him, for, for Chase. So my objective is to get someone back into that task force. Again, it goes back to that recruitment retention piece. If I can offer these kind of ancillary, um, opportunities that aren't necessarily promotions, it gives somebody an opportunity to do things that normally they wouldn't be able to. But it's also beneficial as when I brought up the task force, if we can, I firmly believe if we can crunch drug traffic at the top, it, it filters down to small towns like Stallings and, uh, the shrouding areas that we've helped put a crunch on it and not as much illegal drugs flow in to our area. But that's, that's my goal, yes, sir.
Okay.
I mentioned, uh, earlier that I asked for this to come off of a consent agenda so you could do this presentation and talk to us about those details and I appreciate you doing that. I was always in favor of it, but I thought the public would probably like to see that this isn't a, gonna cost us a whole lot. It makes a whole lot of sense and, and your rationale for doing so, so I appreciate you doing that. And I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and fund your, uh, request.
I'll second it.
All right.
Um, all, uh, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Dang, that was the fastest one in a while.
Thank you all.
Let's see if the next one can be fast.
Yeah, I'm gonna say the next one's probably gonna be just as fast.
Surf.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?